Call the Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. Let the record show it is 9:00 AM, August 31st, 2018. Counselor Smith, would you do the honor, sir, in leading us to the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Probably should have given you prior notice.
Father Remesey has to study up on it.
That's right.
So he studies.
He can review that a little bit. Madam Secretary, would you conduct the roll, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Candace.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board, Kelly Cantley, present.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. You can be present without being in your assigned seat, apparently.
You're on fire today.
I am. I'm on a roll. Any amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
Not from me.
Nor myself.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I thought I had one here.
If it comes up, we can address it.
Thank you.
Okay. Approval of the minutes. Chair would entertain to approve the minutes of August 15th, 2018.
I approve. We approve the minutes of August 15th.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of August 15th. Discussion. Again, thank you to our Board Secretary. Everything looks good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post nay. Motion carries. Minutes of August 15th have been approved. Just in time for audience introductions.
Captain Ubers with the Sentinel.
Agent Collins, Highway 96 Roadhouse.
Well, it is such a pleasure to have you here today, both of you.
She's got her 96 shirt on.
Yes. Looking all pinkish today. Commissioner Items. Commissioner Prince, would you care to start, please?
I wouldn't care to say anything.
That was probably a weird question. Would you like to?
Much asking.
Okay. Let's see. Since our last meeting, I have attended several tourism board meetings, an early childhood development meeting. Let's see. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was at a meeting. It was San Isabel's last, all right?
Yes.
Okay. By mistake. I apologize.
15th. August 15th.
I apologize. Okay. Let's take out my car oil change. No, you didn't want to hear that.
You're on a roll today, it sounds like.
Yeah, I met with the, obviously, we all had our Justice Center meeting, which was spectacular. We learned so much from those folks.
And we did.
And I really commend you for bringing them in and arranging that, Bill. That was really helpful, and I think it's going to help us all really well. And then we had the Century Link meeting, of course, after that. Affordable Housing. I met with them on the 23rd. Fortunately, I missed the Custer Emergency Meeting. And then we had the DA meeting in Canyon. I thought that went, you know, the three years I've been there, that was absolutely the best we've ever had, because we had our tourism meeting yesterday. So that's kind of what I've been up to among all the things that I can think about.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Angie.
Yeah, I was thinking back. I guess San Isabel was the last meeting we had, when that's where you had your good breakfast. August 15th, Gary Hayden. I toured County Road 386 in preparation for the meeting with Century Link. August 16th, I attended the Airport Board Meeting. 22nd, I attended the Justice Center Meeting, as you alluded to, along with the Century Link Wetmore Citizens Meeting, dealing with the phone outage. August 23rd, I attended the CCI Mountain District Meeting in Pontius Springs. It was a good meeting.
You're going to give us some highlights on?
Well, yeah, we talked, the Commissioner, the head of the Insurance Commission was there. He spoke a lot about health insurance and some upcoming legislation. It looks like initiatives are going to be brought before the legislature this year. So, yeah, I can pull my notes and send those to you as well. I did meet with Wells Squire. I really didn't meet with him. I went over to the school and met him, because I had not met him previously, so I had a chance to visit with him a little bit. With Anderson Hollis, he, of course, is involved in the project at the school, and so I just wanted to have an opportunity to meet him and say hello, so I'm glad I did that. I also attended the Justice Center Committee Meeting with Sheila Cross and Tony?
Tom Franklin.
Tom Franklin. So that was good. August 28th, I attended the Custer County Weed Board Meeting. And then the 29th, traveled to Canyon City along with both of you gentlemen and met with the DA to go over the pending, her proposed DA budget, Molly Chilson, which I thought was informative and had not met her, so. And then yesterday, we had Tourism Board Workshop in the afternoon, so that's kind of what I've been doing.
Good. Cool. Yeah, it's been pretty busy since the San Isabel, the master sure. We've got our budget meetings coming up, so I met with Gary and with the road bridge and the road. And the Airport Board, just to prep, you know, get ready for those two departments. The Century Link made probably a big highlight of the last few weeks, because of the outage down there with the 45 or so people that don't have phones now. And, of course, there's several of them, what is it, nine, that are on life alert?
Right.
So it is an issue that we've got to keep pressure on. That Justice Center Meeting, we had, was very good, I thought, too. Lessons learned, just so everybody understands the goods and bads of what these two experts that we brought in, from one, from the state, the other from Park County, who was the department of improvements, I guess is a good way, and the restorations in Park County. Anyway, lots of experience on building court buildings, county buildings, and justice centers, so we're going to take advantage of that. That was Tom Franklin, as Tom mentioned, and Sheila Cross. Lot of work with the Airport Board, getting ready for things, and one of them was making sure the schedule meets and that we can hold our, into the bargain of. We're moving the schedule to begin construction on the removal of that berm, so they can land their airplane out, in order to accommodate the schedule we have for the county, which is putting in the bridge on Hermit Road. We've got to make sure that takes precedence, and we can handle that. Ot 6 was good with that, and in fact said, as long as they can get up here to hunt once in a while, and that's, they've got a couple of seasons to do that, that's okay. We can't pave anything when it gets too cold, so we'll put, the construction's going to be broken into two pieces. The contracts will be let, and they're going to negotiate those, and I'll bring that in as soon as they get numbers, and we can approve the Task Order B effort. And then get that all on contract, so that when the sun hits the ground and the spring warms up, we can start finishing the job for them. Along with that, we did, the Airport Board will bring in the report, but we had to close out that fuel terminal deal, so we could save our $5,000 on the guts of that terminal that we currently have. Got a good deal with QDPOD. They wanted us to buy it by the end of this month, and we saved $5,000, and we said we don't want to buy a new one and put it in and then move it. They said, "That's okay," which is odd. All we care about's the motherboard and the computer, and you're going to keep it and use it until next year, and then we'll take the motherboard. So, you know, so it worked out. We got the new terminal ordered, and Ot 6 paid the difference for the jet fuel part of that, and it came in under what they currently have in their budget, and they'll talk about that when they come in here. What is it, Tuesday or Wednesday next week?
I believe they're on Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah. So that's great. In addition, the, I thought the DA Budget Meeting was pretty good, too, Jay and Tom. We were all three there, several of the counties, the four counties that were represented, Chafee, Fremont, us, and Park County. And, I mean, cares. We had our three commissioners, Fremont had their three, Park County brought one in, and Chafee had a couple of them.
Two.
So it was a good interchange of us all getting together, I thought.
I just to interject on that, if I may. That was the first time where the counties discussed, as a collective group, how we want to handle the DA. And I felt, up until now, each county just did their own. As you may know, the year before last, Fremont County opted not to fund at the same level as the rest, which-
Controversy.
Right. Made you angst from the other counties who had to cover their, their sense. Did everything would say, "I'm sorry." They come and said it was really very poorly handled, which I took as, "We could have done better." But I really liked when the counties were able to get together to discuss this, and then go as a concern in front-
And we could hear each other's concerns.
-to Molly, and I thought that went really well.
And she did really well.
She did a great job.
Listening. She listened very well. Just so that, for the record, all four counties pay for the DA, and we share them, and we are prorated, so that we are the smallest county, money-wise, and population is based on population.
Right.
Okay? And finally, go ahead.
Just before we leave that topic, I wanted to commend Jay. Certainly has taken a leadership role in that, representing our county in that whole DA thing, so I appreciated that. Obviously, you have had good input with them prior to our meeting the other day, so.
Do you think there's going to be more success with transparency from the DA's office because of these meetings?
Sounds like it. That was one of the topics.
That was one of the major topics. The four counties sent a letter to her before this meeting. That was the meetings that we've had previously, and told her that we need to understand what you're doing with your budget, how you're spending it, where the money's going, all the things you're asking about. And she was very amenable to do that. Her excuse, right, wrong, or indifferent was, no one's really asked her before, and no one seemed to pay attention till this group does now, and she promised to be much more open about where her money comes, where it's going. The lip service was wonderful. Let's see what follows up.
Well, I thought you asked some very pointed questions the other day at that meeting, too, including the DA's philosophy on prosecuting, and especially the marijuana offenses, and so I appreciated that. Think they needed to hear that.
They're paying for it. We need to get our money first. March me over here, I'll go down in Wetmore, and we're not going there.
Sorry, but-
All right, last note, fun note. Ot 6 is involved also in the community. They want to be involved in our community up here, because the community nearest to them is Trinidad, basically, in Walsenburg. And so they are instrumental in working with the Custer County Bobcat Booster Club, which is a new organization over the last two years we stood in. And we've got a lot of support from the community here, the business people, private donors donating things, and we're putting up a new scoreboard. We needed it. The scoreboard at the school went out the last two games of last year. It's been giving us fits for a lot of years, and Ot 6 bought that baby. And we finally got it, but too late for this game. So come tonight is the first seasonal game here in town, and it's at 7:00. Booster Club got six light generating, separate construction lights, basically, to light the field, so we've got Friday night lights. We're going to do it two games. The Booster Club's going to pay for those lights twice, so we can have some night games for the kids and families here. So lots of neat things happening in this community.
Good. Okay. Thank you. Anything else, gentlemen, before we move on? Attorney Items?
The Custer County is now officially participating in that class action lawsuit for the Pilk Funds.
Good.
We're on the list, and probably won't hear anything on that for a couple of years, but hopefully somewhere down the line, we'll get some money for that. I worked with Jackie Hobbie on several issues. It's constant. There's always zoning violations that are going on. Generally, she discovers them when somebody makes a complaint about something, and then I write letters, and sometimes I actually talk to the people. I've handled a few of those recently. There's one that she's working on now. I've been helping her trying to do a major tire cleanup. Somebody has hundreds and hundreds of tires on their property, and it turns out there's a state fund that will provide money to assist in doing that, so we may be able to get that cleaned up. I'm not sure, did you all get a message from me yesterday about wanting to have an executive session? I've been working on that, because that same problem, which we had buried for a while, has come back again, and I'm ready to take some action out. I've talked to some people in town, some, we have some private business people who are also being harassed by the same person. And I talked to the Fremont County Attorney about what they're doing and their involvement in this, so I'll, but I do need to have Shannon present, and I don't know if she'll be back by the 4th or not.
I understood he was to return on the 4th, but I can't tell you what time it might be in the evening, so you want to move that to the 5th?
Yeah, maybe we should do it 5th.
How would you like to word that executive session? Legal advice?
Just legal advice, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And the only other thing is I need the county to buy me a new vehicle, because I hit a cow last night, and mine is totaled, so I'm sure-
Beef cow?
Yeah. No, a milk cow, one of Alan Olman's cows up there.
Can we do a handwritten for that today?
Yeah, I mean, $50,000 should cover whatever.
Let me make a note of that.
He said, "Well, on your motorcycle, it'd been $100."
Yeah, that wasn't.
Wow. I'm sorry to hear that. Gosh.
You know, I'm fine, but it's totaled, so it's sad.
The cow probably died.
The cow died, and my car died.
Hmm. Sorry to hear that.
I'm glad you're not.
I don't make a motion that we approve a new vehicle for them.
Oh. Wow. Okay, I mean, I thought you guys were better friends than that.
I'll wait till October with my budget request.
Yes, right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Administrative Assistant?
I have nothing.
Okay. We'll move into public comment. Anything anybody wishes to address the board with? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you. I have no unfinished business.
I do, sir.
Mr. Candace?
No.
Move into new business. We'll allow public comment on each of these before we vote. If there is a vote involved, not all of these items will be voted on today, but I will try to remember to ask for public comment. I think, hopefully, gentlemen, you've had a chance to review the vouchers for the month of August. I can tell you that the total of that, which I have not asked for before, but I did today, $43,249.86, and I would move that we approve the vouchers.
I'll second.
We've moved to second and to approve the vouchers. Discussion, gentlemen?
I went through, there was something. I can't remember what it was.
All right. I noticed that we had, and I've got the amount written down, and it's in here, of course, but Coco had expended some more money on fire mitigation in the Wetmore area. I spoke with Ms. Hobbie about that today, and it seems like we're about to expend the balance of those funds. I think there was $67,000 left after their first big push.
Right.
And Colorado Collaboration has been continuing with that mitigation down there, so we're just about out of that money. Maybe it was $15,000 or something.
This is just, because I don't know the answer, but I saw that there was roughly $500 for the Sheriff's Department for uniforms. I was under the impression that deputies provided their own uniforms. Is that not correct?
I think the last time I-
Or body armor or something?
That's what I'm thinking. It was not for pants and shirts. It was for additional stuff.
Okay. Not cool.
I can't tell you exactly what that was, but I believe we've talked to Shannon about that before, and the deputies do buy their own clothing.
That's what I was-
The department helps with some of their service belt.
Because it says uniforms and-
Right. That's why I'm not getting this number. Yeah. Okay, good. Anything else, gentlemen?
No, good.
Comments from the public? Hearing them will proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the vouchers for August, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post nay. Motion carries. We will just take a quick minute, if you don't mind, sir. If you want to start those, we'll initial those as we go. And Trails for All, Mr. Parsons is here to give us an update, and you're welcome to come up, sir. I would just inform you that we're going to initial these as we go, if that's okay. We're not ignoring you.
We're not ignoring you.
Any stretch of the imagination. Good morning, sir. How are you? You haven't seen you in a while.
Good to see you.
You old Trails guru, you.
Gosh.
Thanks for allowing me to be here today.
You're welcome.
I come with a couple of Thanksgivings for you guys, and then I want to give a short report. No action is being asked for, so. Thank you all for receiving me back in January, just when we were starting out, and for giving us a modest gift to help us have that January 30th event, which was really stellar, neat event, and so thanks for giving us a little boost at the beginning. Also, my wife and I have been so grateful, watching the three of you interacting with the public and with one another, the respect that you show, and being a non-anxious presence sometimes in the midst of anxieties and other people. It's really helpful, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much.
As you probably remember, we came into being as a result of an OEDIT grant, under a Blueprint 2.0 application, and as a result, it's that two-year period that we were under, it's just about up, and it's time for reporting back to OEDIT. And I actually have here a two, a front and a back letter that I put into that reporting, just in case you would like to have copies of it. It has a summary, mostly about what I'm about to just talk about, so. So there's been an awful lot that's happened. I don't know how, where you are of it, but we-
Did you get front of that? Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's two sheets each.
Yeah, okay, sorry. So let's see, sir, there's another packet.
Okay. So we crafted a set of bylaws. We elected a board. We sought after and have received nonprofit status. We adopted a master plan, which I have a couple of copies of here, just in case you would like to have one. We are in the process right now of applying for two insurance policies, one liability and one for directors and officers. We've begun our website. It's just in its fledgling early stage. We've had a Facebook presence for a few months. We have a mailing list of about 160, either persons or couples, and we've been, one or more of us has been attending conferences, seminars, just trying to learn about outdoor recreation, about how to train volunteers, about how to write grants, how to, and a lot with federal agencies about wilderness, and so it's been a steep learning curve. We've been in pursuit of all three of the purposes that really make up what we're trying to do. And the first one is Care of Trails. We have come alongside and become volunteer partners with the United States Forest Service. And this is done in many, many places around the country, but I was unaware of how, there's a lot of, there's manuals actually written for how to be a service organization in partnership with the Forest Service. It's been really, really fun. We have, excuse me, we have over 70 people who have expressed interest in trails maintenance, 44 of which have been confirmed and oriented. And we are sending out regularly now trail crews, clearing or daylighting stretches, especially of the lake trails. Couple other groups, like Bear Basin Outfitting and Seasonal Ranger, or not Ranger, but Employee of Forest Service. They've done really, I think, the lion's share, but we've been learning and figuring out what are, what the limits are of, how many hours can we put out? But we've had a number of trips go up, and we're redoing sections of trails that were cleared in late May and early June, because-
Where, where are they?
Well, Venable and Lake of the Clouds, and then those two, we've been working on most recently, and there are so many trees that have come down since June 1st.
Crazy.
It's just, boy.
Wow.
So it's, it'll be ongoing, and we're planning to spend the winter getting more up to date and get certification, we hope, for a couple of people at least to be able to do crosscut saw, which is a very intense, long process of, to be able to get certified. And to get a few people certified on use, chainsaw certification for outside the wilderness. And we're also hoping to do a number of clinics over the winter ourselves, for the enjoyment and skill producing for other people, for other kind of things that happen in the outdoors. We're also really interested in becoming educators on the trails. I don't know how else to say it, but Pooter Wilderness Volunteers, they have about 300 volunteers. They've been in existence 20 years, and their sole purpose is to assist the Forest Service, especially having some of their people out on trails on any given day, just trying to interact with the public, not as law enforcement, but as people who can help people understand, you know, the choices we make back out there, and sometimes the detrimental effect of that. And so we're hoping to get up to speed more on that and try our hand at it, especially in the South Colony drainings, where we have so many people there, and we have a lot of damage being done to wilderness up there. So that's Care of Trails. Our second purpose is Connection to Trails, and that's really about promotion of the trails to people in our county and people outside our county. We've had a lot of different ways in which word is getting out. None of them are, like, comprehensive, but January 30th event, our best, gosh, face of all Trails for All is Tom Demler over at All the Range. He interacts with people every single day who want to know, "Where's a trail I could go out on?" And so he educates, and he also gets people's names, "Are you interested in being on our mailing list?" You know? So we've got people from a lot of different states who would like to stay in touch with what are we doing. We, I was at the hardscrabble race, meeting people, shaking hands, and getting people's contact info, some of whom, Pontius Springs, Colorado Springs, Pueblo, they would like to be included in trails maintenance.
Good.
We helped host the Leave No Trace Seminar that was here in late June, participated in six different conferences. We send out emailings to our email list. We've had some newspaper articles and radio interviews. We've just started our website, and we're developing a communication plan. So all in all, we're just going to try to find every way we can to be able to help people know that this is kind of an undiscovered gem for a lot of folks out there, and we, honestly, we'd love them to come here and spend money.
How many, how many of you are a weed user?
Well, that's, beyond the board, probably, we average about 12 to 15 people at our monthly board meetings, and there's of that 100-
Some help from out of town, too, you said?
Yeah, we do. We have, at the Pontius Springs, we have a couple that come up for every one of those meetings. They're just really devoted. But we, I would say there's probably about 70 people who are actively interested, who will interact with us. are actively interested, who will interact with us. When I send out a mailing, they might, any one of those 70 might write me back and say, you know, I don't understand what you mean about this. So I think probably 70 active, we care people. Our third purpose is the creation of trails, and we haven't had much opportunity to do any of that. We haven't been in a position even to apply for grants that even could contribute to that, but really interestingly, we've had people, I've had people seek me out saying, you know, I own this piece of property right here on the edge of town, and I hear that you want to create an around-the-towns trail someday, and I just wanted you to know we'd really be interested in talking with you about that. I don't know how many different parcels of land that might involve, ultimately, it may be a nightmare, it may never happen, but it is our hope, because I think it'd be great someday if people could drive to town, get an ice cream, walk the, basically, almost a five-mile loop all the way around, and just be out in the air loving these mountains. So we'll see. The last thing I wanted to tell you about, just things that are up and coming possible now that we're in the status that we are, we'll be taking a handful of people to the National Waha Wilderness Workshop in Gunnison. It's a, it really is a national event. There'll be people there from federal, state, and nonprofit agencies all over the country will be there, and talking about the condition of wilderness and the difficulty every Forest Service office has in being able to obey the law, the Wilderness Act, when they've only got one or two or five people, and they've got, you know, 120,000 square miles to have to manage.
When is that conference?
It's October 10, 11, and 12 in Gunnison. They'll start up on the 9th with some preliminary stuff, but it's mostly registration on the 9th. It's a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and they end at 5:00 PM on that Friday. We, like I said, we're going to hopefully host, co-sponsor some clinics. It would be really neat if we could, you know, teach people something about snowshoeing, and then take them out for like a full moon snowshoe on some relatively safe stretch of rainbow trail. And other possible clinics in conjunction with All the Range, probably. We want to start doing some group activities that would be, you know, hey, we're going to have a hike, limit on 12, we're going to meet here at a certain time. Just talk about maybe this being a terminus point for a mountain bike race from Canyon City. Some of our people on our team know John Fielder. He used to work on one of the ranches here when he was a child, or a young boy, and he loves this valley, and maybe to come do a presentation of some of his photography. We want, we are hoping to be able to create a column for one or both newspapers that would do a summary of a trail a week, and then put all of those together into a booklet that can be given to somebody who's coming to town. Will be applying for grants. We got the 10 lessons for being a strong nonprofit that was developed for the Community Foundation, and we're, we've gone to work on putting three of those lessons into effect about communications, and we're going to develop our website. Last thing, last two things that I want to say is, when I went to talk to the Rotary Club about Trails for All, I, I said to them at the end, I said, Trails for All is a grassroots, all-volunteer effort to improve people's well-being. Really, what we're, what we want to do is to help people's quality of life improve, people who live here and people who don't live here, through the care, creation, use, and promotion of trails in and around Custer County. We believe that trails contribute to a higher quality of life, or can, in at least seven ways, physically, emotionally, mentally, aesthetically, the love of beauty, relationally, environmentally, and perhaps even spiritually, and so that's really what we're applying ourselves to. Last thing I wanted to say is, it has been a delight to come alongside the Forest Service and be able to say, you know, we really, we just want to extend the reach of your work legally and healthfully and whatnot, but I want to say that to you all. I mean, if we can ever do something that will serve you county commissioners, or help our county that we are blind to, or something that you see, you know, boy, this trails group may be a good help, please don't hesitate, because we'd really like to be a servant of our county.
Well, it's amazing, number one, Jeff Utheer is thrilled to death.
Yeah.
To be working with you guys, loves your group, just can't say enough good things about all of you, so he's a big supporter, that's for sure. Sounds like you guys are locked and loaded. I mean, you're doing a lot of stuff, a lot of volunteer time and conferences, and so.
We think we've developed about 300 volunteer hours so far in our trail work, maintenance that will go, that helps Jeff apply for grants, and we, we want to get that way up, you know, we want to get it in the thousands, so.
Does your funding just come from donations and grants, or is there other sources?
No other sources at this point. You know, we'd be open to, you know, feeder streams of a little this or a little of that, but we don't have any grant scheme right now, and I know that we're going to run into problems because we need to have funds on hand a lot of times to be able to get a grant, you know, matching funds, so we just did a small request for donations from our mailing list and got what we needed in order to be able to purchase these insurance policies, but we, we, that's, that's one of our challenges for the future, yeah, but we're not, we don't have any funding source.
I'm assuming Brenda has your email contact information.
Yes, she does.
I wonder if you have considered applying for some Conservation Trust Fund dollars from the county?
Just thinking the same thing.
If you have not done that, I would encourage you to do that. We just sent out a packet to the organizations that have historically applied for that.
Yes, yes.
I would ask maybe if Ms. Brenda could send that package to you as well.
I would love that. It's been mentioned to me in the last couple of weeks, and I recognize that there are groups that have been receiving from that fund regularly for many years, and so I want to be sensitive to not like, you know, being elbowing our way in to, but.
Well, yeah, I appreciate your consideration of that. That should not be a consideration, not at all. I'm assuming we'll have more requested dollars than we have money for.
Of course.
But certainly don't feel like you would be elbowing somebody else out. We need to encourage groups and organizations such as yours to apply for that, because that's exactly what that money's designed for, so.
Well, thank you for the encouragement to do that. I will gladly receive that information and take a look at making an application.
If I know Ms. Brenda, it's probably already been sent to me, so. But thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you for taking the time to come and keep us kind of updated and.
Well, I'm hoping it's encouraging to you. I think that you have in some ways a thankless job, and so it's just anything that we can do to, to, to help you all know partnership, you know?
Right.
We really want to be part of making the county as good as it can be.
Don't quit yet, I got a couple of thoughts.
Yes, sir.
I grew up here, as you know.
Yes.
And I've seen those trails. I've walked them, I've ridden horses on them, I've been on them with a dirt bike, I've been over to Phantom Terrace on a dirt bike.
Yeah.
Back before it was a wilderness area.
Yes.
And, and there's a lot of value in them. You're 100% right, and I've seen them, and you know the history, and you know, World War I, WW.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Efforts, and, and when they really hit their zenith was in the mid-'60s to mid-'70s. Forest Service, I don't know where they got the money, but they got their little Dozer Blade tractor crawlers, cleared the trails, cut the trees, built those bridges, and some of them are still in place.
Yeah.
Most of them are gone.
Yeah.
So it is needed, and I've had a lot of people comment from Buena Vista, Park County as well, on, they've got some great trails up there, and say, man, you guys, these trails down here are a mess.
Yeah.
Wish we were like Park County, and you do need help. That's why I asked how many people you got to do this, and the Forest Service is undermanned, as you know.
Absolutely.
And I don't know what happened to their program to keep the trails going, but I see some opportunities. I see the Tourism Board could be to your front for advertising. I mean, they, they got to be looking, and you ought to part of them, that's, that's a source of money and people to help you grow with, I think, and get the word out, and get people up here, even to help build the darn trails. Come on up here and have a great time camping, and that's what they'd used to do in the '60s. They got all the kids out of high school, looked forward to getting on the trails and working for the Forest Service at that time.
Yes.
And camp up there and thought they were really doing, and they were doing great.
Yes.
God's work.
Yes.
So keep up the good effort, and by the way, tying it with the trails in the valley and the county is important.
Yes.
And I know that's hard to get rights away and all that. Tom's been in the middle of a lot of that, so keep up connecting those, so that, I think it's unfair when you make a wilderness area and you can't take your grandmother.
Yeah.
The only way you can get a grandmother up there is on a motorized vehicle, so then you can't do it.
That's right.
So they need to have some ability to experience the same things. It's like the Grand Canyon, you know, they.
Yeah.
Shut it down, nobody can fly your grandmother over the Grand Canyon.
Yeah, it's true.
So make it a family deal, it's more than just the people that have legs and equipment and the ability to do it. Let's figure out how to get the county involved as well on some community trails.
I love the sounds of that, Bill, I really do. I, I love the thought of people just being able to walk out of their house, or.
Sure.
Get out of their house and get on a trail around the town.
Sure, and that's nice, even the Silvercliff, the little trails that they've got going.
Pretty cool, yeah.
Well, thank you for your time. Yes, I think we had one more question.
You know, it was a question, just a statement, if I can. You know, Canyon City people a lot of times say, why can't we do like Canyon City? Canyon City owns all those areas with trail, they have miles, and that's where the challenge is for you guys, is the city's only owned so far out. They don't own where you're wanting to go.
Yes.
You've got a major uphill battle.
Yes, ma'am.
And then one thing in regards to the Tourism Board, as time goes and you're doing a major event where you're trying to want any people to come into you.
Yes.
Especially during the off-season, you know, the snowshoeing and whatever, that's something where you can come to Forest with, or approach with a mini-grant, and you do your advertising promotion, has to be done outside the area to bring the people in, and you can go for up to $500.
Okay.
And that's something, I'm just now getting ready to start getting the word out there that we're getting ready to start hearing for that, we do that in November.
Okay.
So you have time, if you've got an event coming up for 2018.
Yeah.
Especially if it's in that off-season.
Yeah.
We've, we have, by doing, working with many different mini-grants, we help now to help organizations make September pool.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Again, Paul, thank you so much for coming in, appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom.
You're doing a great job.
So are you.
If we could be of assistance, give us a holler, and I'm sure Brenda's already sent you that information.
Paul, do you have an extra set of tickets to give them?
I do.
I know a number of people I think I can get involved.
There's a letter that just wanted to.
He didn't mention the outstanding legal representation. Oh, no. I'm assuming they didn't have any legal representation.
You drove out from under the cow, you're right there.
Yeah, if you're not killing local livestock, or, thank you, Paul, again, we appreciate that. We'll move on. Next item of business is lookout tower purchase agreement and lease agreement from Sangre de Cristo Electric to Custer County. Gentlemen, I hope you got an opportunity to review that document, we've got two here today. If we so choose to approve this tower lease agreement that we would sign and send those back. Just a quick rundown, Sangre de Cristo has deeded over the ownership of the tower up on Lookout Mountain to the county. One of their requests was that we enter into a lease agreement with them for them to continue to lease the top 10 feet of that tower for their radio equipment, for Sangre de Cristo to be able to communicate with the office in Buena Vista. That is what this document really is all about, is leasing the top 10 feet, so. Chair would entertain a motion for the adoption of the lease agreement.
I move we adopt the lease agreement.
I'll second the motion. It's been moved and seconded to enter into a lease agreement for the term of 25 years with Sangre de Cristo Electric for the top 10 feet of the tower on Lookout Mountain. Discussion? Yes, sir.
I just want to verify that base rent is zero.
That's correct, yes.
And the rental is zero, and that's in exchange for them giving the tower to us, correct?
That's exactly right, yeah, yeah.
I just want to verify that that was correct.
Yeah, I didn't want to get into all the detail before we had the motion, so you're exactly right.
That's violated.
Yeah, the attachment on there does talk about the top 10 feet, Attachment 2A. They currently have the two towers there, so nothing would change as far as that goes.
Is it exclusive, are they exclusive to the top 10 feet?
Yes.
Okay, so if someone else wanted to, needed to be with them, we couldn't do without that rule?
That's exactly right, yeah, yeah. And typically, I, I think in that industry, nobody else would even think about asking if they could also join that top 10 feet, because that's pretty sacred ground on a tower. The higher you get up, the better, the better it is, so. I've looked through the document, of course, and some of the legalese is beyond me, but the contents of it, the 25-year lease, top 10 feet, zero dollars, to me, were the, you know, the main points, so I think we're in good shape there. Further discussion? Comments from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Do we know what the maintenance of that tower, money-wise? I mean, you know, do you guys just take anything that's given to you?
No, not necessarily, but we're certainly interested in owning that tower as part of a bigger scheme to eventually own the land as well. I'm not sure this will address your question specifically.
Good news is, from that point of view, Jackie, is that we already maintain the road, and we're already accountable for it. That's the big deal, getting there to service it, and we don't service the equipment. The, if the tower breaks a cable, that's a different story, but that's not the case over the years, so we're pretty confident and safe.
I just wasn't sure, you know, it was appropriate for government to be in the tower business, but it sounds like that's what we're doing, and we're going to rent out space and.
Right.
And so now we're in the tower business?
We felt it was appropriate, yes, for a couple of reasons. One, there's very minimal maintenance on that tower. Two, we own equipment on that tower, and three, then obviously we will receive the rents from those other companies excluding Sangre de Cristo Electric, of course, but.
Which we've never had any income to maintain that, but.
We'll see how things go. County may be in the tower business more than lookout tower.
Well, there's others, too.
Nonetheless, yeah, we felt it was.
Broadband tower business?
Pardon?
We're going to be in the broadband tower business?
Yes.
Hopefully.
And that's what I was referring to. So, yeah, we felt in this case it was appropriate for the county to own that. I think it's going to be a revenue stream for us, certainly not a huge revenue stream, but I believe more than adequate to take care of the maintenance of the tower, and when we talk about maintenance of the tower, we're really just talking about the tower itself and the guy wires.
Road, that's right, it's not the generator.
So we would maintain the road anyway because we have vested interest in our equipment up there, so.
And so who, what department is in charge of?
Room and Bridge.
And they have been in the past.
Yeah, yeah. Good, other comments in the public?
Good questions, by the way.
Pardon?
She had good questions.
Yeah, good questions. Hearing none will proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the tower lease agreement between Custer County and Sangre de Cristo Electric, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. We will take just a brief second and sign these, and that'll be out of the way.
Sign the other piece. We had extensive, a lot of meetings with all the shareholders in that, on Lookout
That's correct. That's correct. Nope.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, gentlemen. We'll move on then to next item of business, a discussion on the longevity portion of the salary schedule. Just kind of an update or information. The Board of Commissioners adopted the personnel policy dated 2018, and that did not include the longevity portion incentive of the salary schedule. Of course, we had our meetings with elected officials and department heads and actually the employees as well to get input on that. So that longevity piece was removed from the employee handbook. And basically, the longevity incentive was a 5% salary increase based on every five years of service to the county. Am I saying that correctly? Was some concern that there was no ceiling to that longevity incentive plan, and it continued over the years to drive our salary schedules almost beyond management. So that's why we looked at that. I say "we" meaning the elected officials, department heads, and the Board of County Commissioners. Questions, comment?
So what's the discussion?
I think the discussion was to get this back above board so everybody understood what we did, why we were doing it, what the impact is gonna be on our salary schedule in the future, and also our impact on our budget. So the decision to remove it has already been made by that group and ratified by the Board of County Commissioners. But there was a question because we're moving into the budget process. Some of the department heads said, "Do we or do we not figure in the longevity?" And obviously, the answer to that is no, because it's.
We made it effective when?
That's correct. When we dated the employee handbook that included that. You had a question or a comment?
No, you commented what I was gonna say.
Yeah, I think the impact on the budget was probably the big driver of that whole thing. So I keep kind of deferring over, looking over to Kelly. If you have any questions or, sorry, not questions, but additional comments, you're more than welcome to.
No, I, I mean, you said it just like it is. We took it out for a reason.
Yeah. Yeah. There was some question about, well, is it gonna affect anybody currently? Of course, any employee in the district or in the county that would stay long enough, I guess it would affect them eventually. I think everybody's aware that that's going off the table. There were some employees that were hired thinking the longevity piece was gonna be there. I think they're a five-year thing. I think the communication's been had from department heads to those employees. So I think everybody's on board with that. So it's not really an action item. I think the action's already been taken. It was more for transparency and information. Yes, ma'am?
No grandfathering to them?
No.
So this is across the board for everybody?
Yes, ma'am.
But the people who have already gotten?
Can't take it back.
You know, you are taking, right. Okay.
We're not gonna rescind anything. No, that's correct. But the longevity, it is a good question. The longevity incentive, incentive, sorry, is off the table from the date. And I could look it up in the employee handbook, but it was a couple months ago that they did that. So.
Early summer or spring or something.
Yeah. So just wanted to bring that back up to make sure everybody was on the same page. Good question. Thank you. We'll move on then. That's not an action item. Special events permit for Beckwith Ranch for a fundraiser that they have scheduled, defer to Mrs. Kemper.
All right.
Is that a typo or is that how it's supposed to?
That's how it's.
Fundraiser.
That's how it's supposed to be.
That's how it's supposed to be.
That was made very clear.
Wild, Wild West fundraiser. And it is, in the past few of these I've done, I think the Chamber's done these for Beckwith, but they're doing them themselves this time. And I guess they're gonna, they're planning on having a few of these fundraisers. And so this one is gonna be September 15, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. They've got all their paperwork in to me and their checks. And so you guys just need to.
What do they do? Have a bar out there and a band or what do they do?
She didn't say if they were having a band, but yeah, just, are they?
Yeah.
Yeah. And just to raise money for their, she said they were doing, I guess they kind of have it closed down right now, doing a bunch of upgrades or something.
What day is it?
September 15. That's a Saturday. And then I think she said they were gonna do two more this year. I think she said November, October, November, maybe.
Those will be separate action items from the board?
Yes.
Right. May I look at the paperwork, please?
You may.
Who is she?
Dr. Epstein?
Epstein.
Dr. Epstein?
Paul, you're reviewing that, can I ask counsel question? I did the legal work for them on a pro bono basis. Is it appropriate for me to abstain from this?
I'm still not sure what the organization is. Who's?
It's Friends of Beckwith.
Friends of Beckwith.
I suggested how they go about getting this. I suggest they talk with Kelly. I'm concerned I may be too familiar with it.
Yeah, I suppose.
Thank you for asking that, sir. I did a little research and realized you were the legal advisor to them. You're not on their board of directors. That's correct. But you are, as you have stated, that you are one of their legal advisors. I think they have more than one. And in that vein, sir, I would offer up that if you so choose to do so, that does not preclude you from either making, seconding a motion or debating a motion. So you have every right to do that.
Or we break a tie if you and I disagree.
Yeah, it's a great question, and I've certainly researched that over the years. In the event of a three-person board, if one abstains or is not present to vote and it ends up in a tie, the motion dies automatically. Yeah. So Chair would entertain a motion pertaining to the.
I move we accept the permit.
Correct.
Whatever.
Correct. It's an application for a special event.
Application for a special event.
I'll second the motion. It's been moved and seconded to approve the application for a special events permit for Friends of the Beckwith Ranch for September the 15th. Discussion? Kelly, is it, is it fair to say that this is really a liquor, application for a liquor license for one event? What other things are we approving in this application? Noise?
Nothing.
Lights?
Just.
Really is just an application to sell liquor? And according to the application here, malt, venus, and spirituous, virtuous liquor.
I guess you could get wild if they're gonna have a 10-piece band and cannons firing. You might, you may think about it.
You know, I think, you might ask Jackie, but I think that for something like.
Sorry.
And maybe Jay knows that.
Probably from his own.
Special use permit.
They do?
Yeah. And that maybe handles.
That takes care of the other stuff.
Other stuff, yeah.
Great.
And then, there's two types of special events here, one being fermented malt beverage. And, but then this also is a malt, venus, and virtuous liquor.
Right.
The malt beverage is just three-two beer.
Beer and booze.
Right. And the one they're applying for is beer, wine, and.
Right. So if you just wanted three-two beer to be served, then you'd apply for the other one.
She actually inquired about getting a liquor license because they were gonna have so many events. But the special event permits are $25 a day, and a liquor license is $1,200 a year.
And we don't do liquor licenses at state.
No, we do.
We do those kinds of.
Yeah.
They don't have to go to the state to get a liquor license?
Well, you guys approve it.
Right.
And then it goes.
It just goes state.
Safe for this.
Mm-hmm. Further discussion? Hearing none. Comments in the public?
At least know that you're having Western music there and barbecue along with it.
I think, do we have to sign it?
You've got to sign it.
Yeah, and just as a point of information, Jay probably knows this more than maybe you and I, but I would encourage you to look at their website. An extensive list of volunteers for their committees and, of course, the board of directors. It wasn't a concern to me, but it certainly was an eye-opening experience for me to look at the list of people involved in Friends of Beckwith. Very, very few people that I even knew on that list. I think out of the 60-some people listed there, I knew seven. So.
You had a row, boy.
Yeah, apparently. I need to get out of my own world. Hearing no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the special events permit for Friends of the Beckwith Ranch, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstains?
I abstain.
Sorry, any abstentions?
I abstain.
Okay, let's.
For transparency, potential conflict of interest.
Let the record show that the vote passes 2-0 with one abstention. That Commissioner Prince, motion carries.
He signed, I think it's below her. He got it there.
While you're doing that, Kelly, do you prefer we sign in blue ink as opposed to black ink? So do you not care?
It doesn't matter. I, when I protest, I usually do in blue just so that there's, anymore it's kind of nice, blue, because some of the copies are so darn good that it's hard to tell.
Just curious.
And I guess probably out of habit or whatever, I'm more of a black pen user than a green pen user at that point. Tourism Board, Mr. Artabert, welcome.
Hi.
Hi, Angie. When did you get here?
Nice to see you.
Yep. Long time you'll see.
You just moved into the county?
Yeah.
How long have you lived up here?
Full-time, over 20 years. Had property since, my husband, since '82. But we're collateral residents.
Okay. All right. So Mr. Artabert, I believe, is here to present two recommendations for membership of the Tourism Board to fill out the remainder of this year, correct?
Right. I made our copies if anybody needs our copies.
And what you have?
This is the thing that I sent you guys.
Okay.
Yes, we actually have four openings. And I've put in a request for to fill two of those. And I have them down. And at which time, if it's accepted, then we as a board would be then looking at the additional letters of interest. And we'd like to invite them to a meeting. So we're not just based on what they have. They get a feel for what's really going on. And we can, you know, have more of an intermingling and stuff. And that's something that's really not been done in the past. And for all the recipients, I try to make sure that we have all the same type of information because, just because we might know them, not everybody knows them. And their letter of interest, they might not know their history. That way, we can't say, "Oh, it's a good old boy and you're on." Everybody's got the same thing. So I really try to keep that equal. And everybody did it in a different way. And you don't have to have documents. Sometimes a few simple sentences is all that's needed. So I feel, you know, Charlie's definitely put in the effort. He's come to the commissioners' meetings, workshops. He's emailed, you know, definitely put his intent down that he is definitely very interested. And after working with him, some, he did happen to show up to the workshop. He did show, you know, just the financial end of it, and that he does have the background experience that's needed. And then Debbie Adams, again, she had a question she originally asked and then sent in a letter. And I did talk with her. Never really met her before either. But anyway, she did express the interest and one question, whether she is a photographer, whether she'd rather put her photography on the site and get paid or be on the board. And she felt that her heart was really to be on the board and to help promote tourism. I just feel that they both seem like they're good team, team workers, and they'd be an asset for what's coming. And hopefully, they would want to continue on. I want to make sure we have people on here that if I'm no longer involved, it's going, you know, that forward motion that needs to be going and people are comfortable with it.
So if I may, Angie, just to kind of reiterate, make sure if there are four openings at this point, you're asking or suggesting that we appoint two?
Right.
And then you'll have a session with the remainder of the folks to vet who you would like to recommend after that?
Exactly.
And then it would be the three of you making a recommendation to us?
Right.
Okay, just want to make sure I understood the process you're asking.
And we have over, we have at least three letters of interest for those two other vacancies.
Perfect.
So. But this would allow us then, where we can, go on board. Charlie was really through the first process of stuff. So he was really approved for the previous Tourism Board. So.
He was approved for?
He was approved by the Tourism Board. Right.
Got you.
What is Debbie, is it W?
Debbie Adams.
Can you spell it?
A-D-A-M-S.
Yeah.
And a D-B-B-I-E. And Charlie, C-H-A-R-L-E-Y. Ellison.
Couple of questions for you, if I may. Your term expires?
Yes, sir.
In 2019 or?
Well, I thought it was more, but then it's the end of this year.
Okay. End of this year.
Well, 2019, I guess. Beginning of 2019, right?
Charlie's less.
Ellison.
E-L-L-I, I saw it.
And all board members are up for review every year by the Commissioner?
No, sir. No, sir.
Wonder how it was written?
No, they're staggered. But with the situation this year, it's kind of, I think, part of it is, as far as this year, we do have my term and one spot, which would have been, Brent's would have been expiring, well, the beginning of 2019. I think with all that has, that has happened, that I think the Commissioners probably be more comfortable if we do this till the end, the beginning of 2019. So that way, everybody sees the big picture and see that it is really heading forward in a good way.
Yeah, I guess that's where I was headed. I'm assuming, and Commissioner Prince from Canada confirmed your way in on this, that these appointments we're addressing between now and the end of the year, whenever that may be. I guess it was my assumption that those terms would be through the end of 2018.
One of them would be and one of them would be, I think. Um, one of them would be, and one of them would be, I think, 20, uh, it would be the end of, the other would be the end of 2019.
So how would you determine if the, if the Commissioners approved these two appointments that you're recommending, how would you determine who is the end of this year and who is the end of two years?
Thank you.
Well, um, that's a good question. The only reason I said the end of this year, because Mr. Flowers said that that's what he was comfortable with, but it does intimidate. So, so what I would do is, I would ask them which one they wanted to do, but I feel Charlie would be the one that should expire the end of 2019.
Give him a two-year term?
Right.
And Ms. Adams, the end of this year?
Right.
Of course, right.
That's not a two-year term?
No, it's not. It's basically, he's just filling a few months, and it's just one, your term is what Charlie's, yeah. And that's what I would recommend.
Forget the name. The person needs to, your, your view is to fill the rest of this year and all of 19?
Right.
That's...
That's one of them.
That's not a vacancy, or is it a vacancy?
Yes, it is.
Is there a one-year vacancy open?
Yes.
Let's back up a little. It's my understanding that, and I just closed out that screen, that Mr. Bruiser's term expired at the end of this year.
There's one end of each.
Are you recommending one of these people fill his term?
Debbie.
Okay. So Debbie Adams, if approved, would fill out Mr. Bruiser's term that expires 12/31/18?
Right.
Okay? And I think, may I glance over real quick, sir?
So that's fine, yeah.
There you go, right there. And then Mr. Smith's term was to have expired in 12/31/20.
20.
Is that correct? Because we have two different documents floating around here.
One of 20.
Okay?
Well, that's the end of 19.
The end through the end of 19.
Yeah. Not according to the document we're looking at.
And Weisenbach?
What document are you looking at?
I'm showing Weisenbach, 1/20. Mr. Bruiser was 1/19, and Mr. Smith was 1/21.
So we got four vacancies, I like what Jay's doing. Let's see what the vacancies are.
That is the official.
Right, and the 1/21...
Is not being filled.
Well, that's what I'm trying to determine. That was Greg Smith.
Yeah, I believe so.
Right, we're not going there.
That's where that was, Mr. Smith.
Right, exactly. So...
All right, let's start over, Tom. You've got four vacancies, let's do it. You got one, the end of 18, one, the end of 19. Is that true?
Not technically, no.
One of 20, what is that? What's the difference? One more month?
Well, what it is, is it's beginning of 20, right.
January of 19, which is the end of this year.
Basically, we say January because that's when the VOCs approve the new members.
Did you say one or two for 18?
One.
One for 18, the end of 18?
A vacancy.
Vacancy, yes. Expires the end of 18, which is this December 31st.
And one for 20, that would be what, Weisenbach, correct?
That's one of 20, or the 31st of December, correct?
Yes, sir.
I'd rather see the expiry. And then what's the other two?
Well, that's where I was headed, that...
So let's get the whole slate out.
Well, we don't know who the other two are, it doesn't matter, but...
No, I mean, I don't mean, I mean, what are the two vacancies, and when are they expired?
Mr. Smith would expire at the end of 2020.
Okay, so, so that's another year expired.
Right.
31/20.
And, and Ms. Sardaberg expires at the end of 2020?
Hmm, no.
Yeah, that was...
The end of, is that not right?
You guys thought that at the beginning, but then we went back through...
So when do you expire?
The end of this year.
She expires this year.
Oh, so that's another, 18?
I'm going to change it.
The end of 18?
Yeah.
So... I'll check all, all the new documents.
Yeah. Part of the confusion was, we didn't have whose terms were expiring, as far as the names went, yeah.
That doesn't matter, it just matters if you got the...
And, so, Mr. Weisenbach's term would have expired, one of 20. Yours, one of 19. Um, so we got... And missing a name, so, okay, thank you.
Oh, and the...
Mr. Bruiser was one of 19?
Correct.
Mr. Smith was one of 21?
Correct.
And Ms. Renee Smith, one of 19.
Right, and, and ex officio have to re-up every year.
Correct. So...
That's only four people.
All right, let's deal with what you came here to deal with today. So you're recommending Debbie Adams to finish out Bruiser's term? Okay? Which would be one of 19?
Right.
Your recommendation to fill out Mr. Smith's term is, or Mr. Weisenbach's term?
Mr. Weisenbach's.
Okay? With Mr. Ellison?
Yes, sir.
Okay? Which would expire in one of 20?
Right.
So, and Ms. Adams would be to the end of the year, Mr. Ellison would be for a full year, basically, plus the, the rest of this year, does that make sense?
You'll vet the rest of candidates?
Right.
And you'll recommend to us how to proceed, and what positions you would choose to fill?
Right.
Yeah, I think, if I understand your question right, is you're not only going to bring us some more names, but also whose terms they're going to fill.
Right, right.
So that we get this rotating schedule right. We don't want to bring everybody on board and have them expire in three or four years.
Um, my one question here is, that's only four people. With the, um, revamping of, of the Commissioners, not being a voting member on there, that leaves a spot that's open, so that means we've got one other...
That's entirely up to the Tourism Board, from my perspective.
So we'll be discussing that.
I agree with that. I think that's a decision, once you have a quorum, you can decide if you want to fill an extra position, you could fill three extras, as long as they stay required.
Well, and also, if there's enough that we feel would like to, I mean, there's also ex officio, you know, too.
Bylaws, right now, just call for five members.
That's correct.
They can change it.
If you're going, if you want to change it. But I, I'm not trying, I have to go back and look at the resolution. If the resolution says five members, the way it was passed by the voters, which I think it does...
It does.
All right, so...
Yeah, state law says a minimum of three, their bylaws say five, with additional members appointed by the Commission, Board of County Commissioners, if they so decide, as ex officio members of...
Can I ask a couple questions? Because I have a little problem with your logic, Angie. There's an ad in a Tribune that says it closes on the 7th of September. So we could get 10 more applicants.
Exactly.
And I have a problem in that every applicant has different qualifications. Some are going to be great, some are maybe not so great. And so, I have a problem coming in here now with just two, and recommending those, because we don't know of the two, and they may be, they may end up being the top dogs, but we don't know that. And so I have a problem putting a person on there for a full term, or whatever it ends up being, and having it maybe be the bottom of the pack of the 10 people that are going to apply. And I know we have gotten a lot of interest, I have, several people that have done that, we've got a couple that attended a meeting, but they showed an interest. So, I personally am not comfortable taking anybody, because we're only waiting another week.
I know, and we went through this on...
I know, so why are you here?
Why am I here? Because I feel this is what's best for the Tourism Board at this time. I feel with the qualification...
For one week?
With the qualific, what we, we have, we don't even, basically, have a quorum, you know? But Charlie was already pre-approved.
No, that doesn't make any sense.
And, and if I didn't feel that these people would be good and willing to work with people, I wouldn't even be here.
Well, I think that's great, and we respect your opinion, but I'm saying, your opinion would also weigh in on the other 10 applicants.
Well, I'm not, yeah, I'm not the only one on that. I feel it's fair that we be given the chance to really interview them, and then have them to come in.
And I would like to have everybody interviewed. But anyway, that's my opinion, so...
With all due respect, Bill, I'm going to disagree, and I'll tell you why. I think your point is extremely well-taken. I mean, we don't know what the pool of applicants is, so how can we vet the best ones if we don't know? That's an excellent, excellent comment, and I agree with it, but I'm going to disagree in this particular case, because if we don't have people that, who have come to meetings and have shown an interest, helping Angie vet the rest of them, the rest, excuse, the rest of applicants, I don't mean, that hurt, then it's all going to fall on Angie's shoulders to do this, and I don't feel that's appropriate. So, we know Mr. Ellison was approved previously, and I grant you that, neither hand or there, but I like the idea of having three people vet the rest of, it's short-term. I mean, Ms. Adams will be here just for, what, four months, three months, whatever the time limit left is, and then we could re-look at the whole picture again. But I just, but, I, I'm in favor of having more than just Angie be the one to come to us with peace of mind. And, and, but I get your picture, and I, I think your comment is very well-taken. You don't know the full scope of the applicants, so how can you pick something right now before that?
But that's our job, too, Jay, is, it's incumbent upon us to really understand, because the unusual circumstances.
And I didn't, I didn't agree with that.
I would, I would, I would think, that's our job, that's, by, by law, we're approving this, and I don't want to rubber stamp somebody unless I really understand, because we made that mistake before.
And I, again, with all due respect, I really don't agree with that.
Okay.
And, and that's just my opinion, and I'm not saying yours is wrong, if I have a different opinion. We trust the committee to bring their people forward. I don't think we then should second-guess, unless there's a specific reason. For example, I will tell you, and I'll, it's on the record, and I'm putting it on the record again, that when the Planning and zoning committee comes, with people who've been in there 19 and 20 years, I have an issue with that, okay? But, if they, Planning and zoning committee comes and says, this is who we want, unless I have a specific, real, hard fact reason to say, I don't like this particular person, I trust them, that's why I have the committee. I don't want to pick all the people on it. So I think we, we ought to entrust the committee to make the decision, unless we, as a board, really feel that they have just made a horrible error, I think we need to rubber stamp it. Not rubber stamp it, but we gave them the authority, we gave them the responsibility, let's give them the authority. That's just my opinion.
You know, I'd like to weigh in, too, I think you both have great points. I have a little heartburn over, one, the process, two, certainly the specific circumstance that we find ourselves in, we're, we're just barely functioning within the realm of legality. I, I agree with what you said, Commissioner Prince, about, I think we need to get the core of this Tourism Board back in order so that they can function legally. I think it's incumbent upon us to, to try to do that. I also agree that, I don't like the word rubber stamp here necessarily, but I believe that if we entrust responsibilities to any board, they come to us, I agree with, we need to have some specific reasons to go against that. In, in this particular case, I find myself in a little bit of a predicament, because I believe I do have a specific reason that we shouldn't be rubber stamping these, and I will put that on the record. Number one, I, as a Commissioner, was very disappointed in the functioning of the Tourism Board, including recommending other people. So that would be the basis where I would say, I think we need to give this a little extra look, plus, obviously, this board spends money that I don't believe any other boards do when it comes to the tax basis. I don't want to micromanage the Tourism Board as a Commissioner, I don't think it's our responsibility to micromanage. I do believe we have due diligence in this case to make sure that we try to get this right, get it put back in place. I think the prior Tourism Board was dysfunctional, that's certainly been documented in public meetings. So, that's why I'm just not ready to just rubber stamp everything. I know one of these recommendations you're bringing forward came from the old board, I didn't like the way the old board functioned. Doesn't mean I don't, that I dislike your recommendation necessarily, but I believe it does warrant a little extra scrutiny. So that's where I'm at. I, I understand, I think, what Commissioner Candace is saying, I... We're not always going to have this circumstance in front of us. Hopefully, this will be the last time for a long time, and then I think, as we move forward, probably Commissioner Candace's angst goes away, as mine would, that we have a board that's functioning and doing its job. So, we, Chair would entertain a motion to move forward with approving the recommendations from the Tourism Board of Charlie Ellison and Debbie Adams.
Also move to put it on the table, then we could decide?
And I will second the motion. It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation of Charlie Ellison to fill out Mr. Weisenbach's term through January 2020, and Debbie Adams to fill out Brent Bruiser's term, expiring January of 2019. Discussion? Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll make a comment. I met Ms. Adams for the first time yesterday. I was very, very impressed with her, but I'm not a decision-maker, the recommendation's coming from the sole voting member on that. Mr. Ellison, I've been to multiple meetings with him, and I'm very impressed with his financial aspects, questioning what is right, wrong, or indifferent. And I, I just feel it's incumbent upon us to not put the entire burden on Angie.
I agree.
The sole member, obviously, we're talking about Angie.
Sole voting member.
The sole voting member at this moment, to do all the vetting, I think these two individuals, I'm convinced, would make excellent members, based, based on what I've seen, but I would not say I want them, I would just say, based on the recommendation. So I think spreading it out just makes more sense to me, but I certainly would defer to, you know, look at the whole pool. I just, I just have a real hard time with Angie being the sole decision-maker.
Yeah, and I'd like to just, and I, I know that this was not your intent, Commissioner Prince, but I want it for the record to, to make sure everybody understands that Angie is not the only member on the Tourism Board.
Absolutely.
Renee Smith is currently serving on that board with you. She is an ex officio member. Whether she is aware of it or not, unless your bylaws preclude, which I believe they do in this case, that as ex officio member, she would have voting rights unless it's precluded by the bylaws.
She does not have voting rights.
And she does not have voting rights, because your bylaws state that ex officio members will not have voting. So currently, for the record, you are the only voting member.
Right. And she has had input.
Renee certainly has had input, and is a current serving member of the Tourism Board, so...
Okay, now, let me take a comment there, then, to pick up on it. Because I, too, talked to Debbie Adams for hours, and I talked to Charlie. And I was impressed with his eagerness to help serve, and he showed, and went to the meetings. I've also been impressed with Peggy, who took the time to come here and jumped through hoops to be here, because we thought the, I did, I thought we had to make a decision date, but we don't, my dear. And I thought, I'm also impressed with the other applicant, we've got five applicants right here, right now. And I don't think that she is making a decision upon her, by herself, because, because it is important that we understand, with you, Commissioner Flowers, we need to understand that this is an extenuating circumstance, it's different. So, that's my position.
Can I make a...
Yes, sir.
Well, you're talking about Charlie Ellison filling the Bob Weisenbach's term?
Yes.
The Commissioner's term, which is now vacant, because we're not going to have Commissioner, that comes up every year. You could consider appointing Mr. Ellison just for that particular term, and then you start fresh, because all three, I mean, Angie, and Mr. Ellison, and Ms. Adams, if they're all approved, you have a quorum in the meantime, but all three would be up for reconsideration, and at that time, in January, you could decide, if you want to switch it around and decide who's going to have a one-year term or a two-year term.
But I would rather rank them.
It was my understanding that you choose not to do that.
I choose not to do that.
Okay. Good. Further discussion, gentlemen? Public comment?
Well, I was going to say this one thing that Clint said, you know, appoint them both to expire at the end of the year, just on the purpose of getting a quorum established.
No sense to beat a dead horse. I have some reservations about this. I think I've probably, one-on-one, shared those with Angie. I just do not want to see this Tourism Board go down the route in behavior from the past. If that does, I will be the first one to lead a charge to take a serious look when we start voting these members again for new memberships. That's not a threat, it's just the way I feel about it. I'm going to call for a roll-call vote. I'm going to ask our Secretary to perform a roll-call vote. Holy smokes. I don't know what her order is, does not matter to me.
What is the motion? Is it the motion?
The motion is to approve.
Is it a one-year term?
The motion is to approve Charlie Ellison to fill Bob Weisenbach's term, to expire in January of 2020. And to approve Debbie Adams to fill Brett Bruiser's term, which expires in one of 19.
Okay. I made the motion. I'd like to amend my motion, if I may, please.
You certainly can.
I would like to amend my motion that one of the two candidates fill the position that was held by the Commissioner and one to fill the term, which was one of.
Bruiser.
Bruiser. Of Mr. Bruiser's term, so.
So instead of.
I like what Clint and Ms. Collins said. I think that makes sense. We have, we're only going for a couple of months to get up and running, and then we can revisit this once we have sufficient people who can put their brains together and come up with all the recommendations. I know you're opposed to it.
Is there a second? Again, I would ask if there's a second to the motion to amend. Hearing none, the motion dies with respect, sir. Further discussion? Madam Secretary, would you conduct a roll-call vote, please?
So you don't care what order? I'm just going to go with that?
Generally, not always. In this case, it applies so that if a member of the Commission wants to justify their vote, they may do that. Without a roll-call vote, they don't have that opportunity.
Okay, I'm just going to do it in the order I do roll calls.
That's fine.
So Commissioner Flower.
I'll vote yes.
Commissioner Candace.
Nay.
And Commissioner Prince.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries, two to one vote. The positions of Mr. Weisenbach and Mr. Smith have been approved. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. And then I had one more thing. I didn't know if you want to go on or stop.
It depends on what it is, so.
I guess you guys read the item in regards to the change of email I sent out as far as pictures being taken down off the website. They're back, so you guys have that.
That's Tourism Business. All right, thank you.
That's it. I'm up.
Thanks, Angie.
Thank you guys very much.
I said this yesterday, I just want to say again. You stepped in.
Yes.
When you were by yourself, you took a leadership role. And I just want to commend you publicly for doing that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. I agree. Thank you, ma'am.
Ken, I just want to say one thing with it being made the way it was. When we go into the next year, you then have somebody that is actually on the board, which would be Charlie, because all the rest of us will be new pointies.
Good, thank you. All right.
Now, what's next?
Next item, I'm struggling with the writing.
Passing notes to school.
Consideration of probation salary increase for the IT Director. The Board of County Commissioners asked Commissioner Prince if he would evaluate our IT Director, Mr. Vernon Roth. He has done so. And he is eligible then for an increase in salary post-probation period. So I would move that we authorize our Finance Director to implement a salary increase for Mr. Roth.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to increase, salary increase for Mr. Roth, coming off of his six-month probation period. Discussion.
Yeah, I understand that it is time to do that, and he has his exemplary job. Thank you for saying that, because I was going to say the same thing. I didn't just speak to him. I spoke to all of the. He's involved in everybody. Even in the fires. Everybody, and everybody said, if he says, I don't know the answer, he's coming back with the answer. Rather make up an answer. I appreciate that. I think he's done a great job. It was a great hire. And I'm very, I think we're very fortunate to have him. And he's watching. Good job.
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying. I feel like he's been very available for all of our staff. Doesn't hide out in his office. Very polite, very respectful. I also echo that I think it was a great hire for our county. I think our IT department's moving forward. We have a new telephone system. He drove that. The 911 system's coming onboard shortly. He's certainly been involved in that, so. Was gracious enough to hire on at less than, to go and rate for IT Directors. Appreciated that, so I just think he's done a good job. Further discussion?
Just the one last thing, just for the record. We did speak with Ms. Hobbie about financing, and it's certainly within the financial budget to do this. It's not outside the budget line.
Correct. Public comment? Hearing none, we proceed to vote, all in favor of authorizing our Finance Director, Mrs. Hobbie, to increase salary for the IT Director. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. So be that. Public comment? Before we adjourn.
Early.
We're there.
I like it.
Hearing none, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.[1788.61]